It's Friday, I'll call the meeting in Ramsey County, question order. Please join me in this pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge to the justice of the fight in the United States of America. A conservative government for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming tonight, it's gonna be a short, short meeting, I promise. First item on the agenda would be approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Anything to approve? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, anything additions or changes on the agenda?
Anything to approve? I would second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Next item would be Lisa Deeseff, she is unable to attend tonight's meeting. And I guess I haven't been in contact with her to see if she'd like us to take a action on those funds.
Could've waited, they went up a quarter percent today.
Well, I talked to Bryce from Bremmer and he said that although the rates can't be locked in and with volatility, there could be some changes, but he didn't anticipate.
I'll talk on the CDs.
Oh, no, this is that bond ladder that they, in the packet, and... He didn't think there'd be any harm in waiting for three weeks? Cause our next meeting would be the 7th of February. So if we wanted to have Treasurer Deeseff in attendance to discuss and give her recommendations? Or does the commission like to take action on the bonds? Obviously, the fees are there.
These are the ones that come out in March, is that what we're talking about here?
No, I don't think so. Is it, that's at 4.9 million?
No, it's just sort of bonds, where they work to show them come due.
Right.
Right, so there's...
I think it was just basically...
On the cherry, there's one that says March 23rd in the table.
Yeah.
So that's the one that we're talking about, that will come due, or what? Obviously, there's...
Obviously, we may need Lisa to explain this better, I guess. They, right, there's a table that she had sent us and Bryce and Kate had given us at our last meeting. And there's fees regarding it, and the fees go down as the amount of money goes in. So that fee would be lower if we put the full 5 million in there. But, and like I said, this is something that can be delayed for till our first meeting in February when we get a commissioner or treasurer Deeseff to attend. And then if we have any questions between now and then, we could certainly ask or have Kate or Bryce answer those questions next meeting too, from Bremmer.
Mr. Cameron, I'd make a motion that we table it until our February 1st meeting.
Okay, first meeting in February. So it's not the first, it's this...
Yep.
I know what you meant. We have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. We moved and seconded that we've tabled the motion or tabled the action on the Bremmer treasury accounts until the first meeting in February. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we will delay that. Mr. Crosby?
Hello?
So our Veteran Service Officer, Bryce Crosby, is here to talk about a trip that he's been asked to attend.
Yes, I just have that one for you to hear. Just a little precursor, I've been involved with the State American Legion for the last four years and because of me working with them, they asked me if I wanted to be part of some national committees for the Legion. And I asked them what it entails and they said usually nothing. So you get put on a committee and never called in or anything like that. And that's been going on for the last four years. Although and behold, a couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call from our National Executive Committee saying that the committee I'm on has been called into Washington DC. So at the end of February, on the 27th and 8th, I'm allowed to go up to Washington DC. The American Legion pays for my flight. My living in Perdian and the local post is paying for half my motel rooms and stuff when I'm over there because they don't cover rooms and stuff and they're quite expensive. So it's an opportunity that I didn't want to pass up, so I put in for leave for it. I was in Washington DC one other time for the National Guard and the colonel I was with, he said he cut our day short. So after we're done with the meetings, I had to fly out the very next morning. I made a quick run down the Capitol Mall in the middle of the night in the rain and that was my experience in Washington DC, other than sitting in some secure meetings for several hours. So I really kinda wanted to go back. So I put in leave for this. If you look at the first sheet, that was the email I got from the National Adjutant on there telling me what I had to do to become a member of the commission. The committee that I'm on is the Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation Committee. So it kinda falls in right with what I'm doing with my job and stuff right now. Look at the next sheet, it's just a brief synopsis of what the Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation Committee, what its purpose is and some of the functions of it. And then after that, you have a brochure that shows you some of the legislative actions that were brought up to or by the committee for the veterans to the national legislators. And behind that is a little bit more of the entire bit of the Legion stuff. So what it would be on the 27th, they have a call in and kinda give us some instructions of what to do and we have a committee meeting, we meet for the day. And then on the 28th, we have the commander's call where we actually sit down with the legislators and try to convince them or get their opinion and inform them of some of the Veterans Affairs Rehabilitation actions legislatively that we like to get through. Some of the more recent things that they've been working on were stuff like concurrent disability and retirement payments. So you might not be aware right now, so if you're a disability unless it's 50% or greater, a veteran cannot get a military retirement and a disability. They either get most likely the disability and then that's taken out of the retirement, even though the disability is tax-free, so they're not really making much as they get disabled and if they're not over their 50%. Another thing that they're working on, just recently, if you notice all the TV with the Camp Lejeune stuff, was kind of put out there for the civilians and the contractors that are on the Camp Lejeune because the VA has had something in place for a decade for the veterans. But when you look at the ads and stuff, it's kinda enticing veterans to give these lawyers a call and it never ensues them to walk well. I have one veteran that called the lawyer in Maine off the TV and because he did that, I cannot touch his case anymore, or Fargo cannot touch his case anymore until he submits a receipt from this lawyer in Maine saying that he's paid in full. So yeah, so now we literally can't even touch his case on anything anymore. And so what they're looking at some stuff is to try and get some help from veterans to fix the situation out there and suffer them too. So I said, I think it's gonna be a great opportunity. I would like to come back and tell you guys what I learned and stuff during my trip with the legislative stuff. I've reached out to the commissioner and the NDVA, Lonnie Wennington, and asked if there was anything that he might like me to bring up on behalf of North Dakota and stuff. I haven't heard back with from him yet, but this has all been kinda short notice stuff. So he might be putting something together, if not, I'll talk to him, I'm sure within the next few weeks, so. I'm sorry I talked fast too.
Not a problem, appreciate it. When I first saw the leave request come across my desk, I was like, well, that's an incredible opportunity. And talking more with Mr. Crosby, it seems like it falls right in line with what his job duties are as a Veteran Service Officer for Ramsey County, as well as Benson and Nelson. And I would like us to approve him attending that without having to use any annual leave. I think even though it's not a county-sponsored, state-sponsored, it's an American Legion that falls right in line with what you're doing for veterans in our area, so.
That's two days, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion, not charge the ESO leave for those two days.
Without using the annual leave?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. Now that, and that, first, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve that without having to use any of your annual leave, Bryce. Is that, so you're not looking for any funding from the counties at all that you're representing? You said they only reimburse you for half your hotels?
Oh, because I took two days on the weekend to build the Smithsonian stuff and I didn't want them to pay for anything on my personal side, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, it's a wonderful opportunity and, you know, good for you that it falls on a... And, you know, if you're there Friday, then you can spend the weekend and enjoy some sightseeing.
Yep.
Because Washington's too important to not, to go there and not see some of the sights that they have to offer, so. Good for you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Mr. Host.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
So Mr. Crosby is also a Cub Scout?
And Scouts BSA, so yeah. So somewhere down the road here, I'll probably have several Scouts in here because they have to go to a government meeting as part of their Americanism requirements. So we had some attend with the city and stuff and virtual and stuff, so now that COVID's gone too, we can do... Our, the PAC itself has got huge, it went from Courtney Holden runs at it, it went from, you know, 16 Scouts and I think they're over or around 80 Scout, Cub Scouts right now. And we went from six to 16 Scouts BSA because it's not boys scouts anymore because we have girls in our troop and stuff now too, so. Yeah, it's going and, because what's going on is the PAC anticipating an increase of about eight to 10 Scouts a year at least, just from transferring over from the Cub Scout program. So the American Legion is helping out, so a lot of the kids and stuff, because it's very expensive. The dues cost alone went, started out when I was there was like $20 and then 40, now it's $111 just after the few years. I think they're kinda paying for some of their legal issues that they had with child abuse stuff and it's trickling back down to us and stuff, so. Uniforms and stuff are ridiculous, hundreds of dollars, but the American Legion now buys all the uniforms and we pass them down because the kids grow out of them sometimes.
True.
So when they get new rank or switch over positions, they just get the uniform passed down so they don't have to worry about the cost of that. And then they'll fail leave, we just have to turn the uniform back in and stuff too, so.
Well, we look forward to having the Scouts in sometime and look forward to hearing about your trip.
Yeah, I'll give you a better warning than a day or something.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Crosby? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
All right. The Hagee Bridge, I'm not sure how many are familiar with the Hagee Bridge, but we were required to put a 26-ton weight limits on that now after the states or the federal, the state has been doing all the inspections. So my thought was maybe that'd be a good candidate for our next replacement. It's kind of a high-travel road. Connects, you know, east to west for probably seven, six, seven miles, eight miles. So I guess, any thoughts on that to get on it, I guess? 26 tons is over like 52,000 pounds, 80,000 pounds.
Did you have that up on the parcel viewer by any chance? If not, I, in between, yeah?
It's right there.
Perfect, Paul, thank you. That's where it's at, up on the Edmore Cooley. We're between section 12 and 13 on Morse Tomship?
And a couple of years ago, we put a new bridge deck in right there where the arrow is now. A little bit longer bridge, but...
Do you think that would be a possibility with this bridge, is just putting a deck on it like we did on that, or probably not?
Honestly, I don't know, we didn't know, we don't know what Toronto did to make it down to the 26-10. We haven't seen the report yet, so. You know, I, I guess we do know that underneath the footing, underneath the head wall, the buttonet, the dirt seems to wash away all the time and create a hole in that back wall. So obviously, there's no riprap left underneath there. I have never seen the bottom of that footing in the years I've been here, it never goes dry. So actually don't want to know what it looks like, but for some reason or another, that dirt keeps washing out from behind that head wall. And that's generally what happens is that there's nothing underneath the head wall, not there. But I don't know why it got reduced to 26 tons. You got any ideas?
I don't, I looked at the report too and I didn't get a whole lot. They had pictures and stuff in there, I didn't really make a good deal for what was wrong with it. But it's an old, I think it was built in 1970?
Yeah.
It's a timber bridge, oh, it's with timber buttonet, so you wouldn't be able to put anything else on it.
Oh, sure.
Fix the timber bridge or replace it, most of that to replace them.
It's 100% wood, the deck is wood, everything is wood, plain walls.
You need a motion from the commissioner?
Just to put it on our replacement list, yep. And you probably, I don't know, you guys all know, but it takes three, four, or five years to get... Once we start the process, it takes that long to get them actually in the ground. I mean, all the, first, it has to be okay by the state, you know, on the replacement list, and then there's sculpture and all the hoops you have to jump through, so it takes a long time. So the earlier we get started, the better, I guess, I thought.
And we have applications for the starting funding to do tomorrow in the state. And some of those aren't that 100%, some might. So we'll see if they have sufficient funds for that, otherwise it'd be 80%.
Yeah, we just got the notice two weeks ago or something. And up until now, it's been over the legal lows.
Better be moving on it.
Yeah.
Takes four or five years on this point forward. So I'll make the motion to put it on the list, based on what we're doing, right?
Do you need to include the application too, or not?
Yeah, we, there's an application we have to put in to get it on the list, so.
So I'll make the motion that we fill the application and then get it on the list. I would second that.
All right, motion and a second to go ahead and approve getting that list on the replacement and filling out the application for it, so. Further discussion or clarifications or...
No, we'll just keep it informed, I mean, this is one of the deals that takes a lot of years to get done, so.
Okay.
I guess if you get questions or comments in the public about it, at least we're stepping forward.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and then just an update on the process on our second footershop. So up to date, we've spent just a little over $1,000 fixing it, it's pretty much all ready to go now. The only thing we gotta do is tighten up the springs that lift the door and then rewire the three-way switch. The push-button thing for the opener works, but the wires that come down, the open, closed button, it's not wired yet. So, and so part of that $1,052 was $400 for a new walk-through door, which it needed anyway. We just happened to put it in at the same time, so. For roughly $650, we got it all put back together here. And he'll probably be using it before the end of the week, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it was good news, I mean, it didn't cost that much to get it all back together, so.
It looked worse than that.
Guess it did.
Anything else, Kevin?
I guess the only other thing, I did finally get the ball rolling on the two trees and pen that we were gonna cut down. I absolutely forgot about it, so I contacted a couple of the local tree removal people and I just did it today, so I didn't get anything back home yet.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions for Kevin?
Did get the construction contract bond received and stuff from Dayton, but haven't seen a schedule for the box cover up by Ramsey County yet. That's it.
Okay. New business, site authorization. We have a motion to approve the site authorization for charitable gaming.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Visitors and delegation, Sheriff Lang, anything for us tonight?
No.
Okay. You know, we're working on some office renovations and some enhancements to equipment over there, so as soon as you get those prices, come talk to us.
Yeah, we're kinda got to put a step back here in the last week.
Yeah.
We did some painting in the office and did a little updating and rearranging, looks a lot better.
Still out of the 70s paneling, but not much you can do about that.
Yeah.
So appreciate you coming in tonight. Anything else? Other announcements?
Copier leases, we got them a copier.
Yeah.
That's been ordered.
They were sharing a copier with the LEC and it'd work a lot better to have it back in the office where they're located and they can print right directly from their computers and...
Scan emails.
Yeah.
Color.
Yeah. So it'll work out good and it's really reasonable, so.
What's that?
I think it was 45, is it 45 a month?
Total for... For everything that we included, it was 78.50.
Okay.
Maintenance, so I mean, anything goes wrong, all they do is call and somebody shows up and fixes it and it includes the toner and...
It's the same, same thing that we do here in the building and...
Is there a limit on the number of pages per month they're recording? I know I've seen that before.
I believe, I think we were gonna, they were gonna keep track of what, a three-month trial, like a run? I think they started it at a thousand, but I, you know...
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if this printers can help us go kind of paperless, because we got a lot of forms that are already on our computers, we can just send there and now...
You can scan it through.
Right.
Yeah. Because we use that a lot on our copier, instead of having each individual person having or sharing or...
This is the way it's going.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully, I think they said a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So... Yep.
Well, again, appreciate you coming in tonight and providing the update and everything that you and your deputies are doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports on portfolios, announcements? We did have a airport meeting last Monday, a week ago, I guess, and everything's going all right. So having some issues with some financial reports from City, but hopefully they're working out the bugs in their system. And boardings were up for the year, down for December. A lot of it was weather-related in December, as everybody can imagine. But for the year, I think we're up about 8%. So just shy of 7,000 passengers, we get to that magic number of eight, we get some more money from aeronautics. And really, the key number would be at some point, $10,000 or 10,000 passenger boardings for the year and a million dollars a year that the airport receives. But if we go up from where we're at now to the 8,000, we get another, I think it's 450,000, so.
That comes from the feds?
Yeah.
It's good people are here, isn't it?
Yeah, you know, a lot of use out there and we'll have our essential air service contract come and do in, end of June and working on a couple of different options on that, so. SkyWest, I think, will continue to be the carrier, but they may have some changes in schedules and things like that. But it's a big deal for a community is having a regional, local airport that provides daily services to one of the major carriers. That's kind of all I have. Anything, Mr. Orvis, question?
No.
Lang? No. Nothing? Okay. Commissioner Volk and I both have the LEC meeting in the morning, looks like a full agenda, so.
I have all my meetings tomorrow, starting at 8 until noon.
Which is good, this is one day done.
And if they, any, uh, commissioners have a desire to tour the jail, let us know. Be happy to set that up and get a better understanding of what we're doing and what they're trying to do over there and all the the good things that are going on, so.
What? Yeah, I think, what is it? Is it this week or next week? Next week. They're gonna be there tomorrow?
Department of Corrections, uh, will be tomorrow with a closeout on Thursday, so. We're hoping, fingers crossed, that, um, talking with Captain Kraft and Sheriff Lang and uh, STAR that everything, the stars are aligning. And we should hopefully have everything in place to meet those obligations that they're looking at and meet the requirements that we need to be able to increase our, our population over there. Been on a non-compliance order for about a year and a half now. So been down to fifty, fifty bed limit for a long time and it's cutting in. That's all I have. Anybody else? One, two, three? Thank you all for attending.